Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, November 6th, 2023 at 6:00 PM, and I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. Today, we will be going to executive session and then coming back into open session. We are going into executive session for the following two reasons. First, Master General Law, Chapter 30, A, Section 21, A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Free Town Police Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do. And two, Master General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21, A1, to discuss the discipline or dismissal of an employee. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. We're now in executive session. Okay, we are now back from executive session and back in open session. So I'll move on to agenda item three. Open session minutes from 10:16, 2023, and 10:23, 2023. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 10:16, 2023, and 10:23, 2023.
Motion made.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item four, this is the whether or not to approve and sign the letter of support for the admissible digital equity plan grant. I read that letter today. Looks fine. Any questions on that?
No.
And I guess, Deb, like, what kind of?
So this is, you know, this, the new governor, she's really pushing, like, everybody have access to broadband and digital equity. So they're offering this grant and serpent access to be part of this, where they're gonna, you know, do some testing around our town and see, you know, where we might have some issues with broadband, not only in the service itself, but also in the residents, right? Are there some residents that are not able to afford the broadband and whatnot? And then report back to us. And from that, I'm sure there'll be, as always, grants that will follow to fix some of those issues. But we're also in the process of working on the town side municipal fiber. So I thought, you know, I think this lends itself hand in hand to that project.
All right, great. Any discussion?
No.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the letter of support for the municipal digital equity plan grant.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on, we have two renewals for Class II motor vehicle license. A is Bob Motorworks, Bob's Motorworks, and two is, B is Craig Cabral, DBA Evolution Auto Sales. Any discussion on these?
No.
No.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2024 renewals for Class II motor vehicle license for A and B.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have the Class III motor vehicle license for 2024. So we have, I'll just list them off real quick. Jeffrey Raposa, DBA East Free Town Auto Salvage. B, Big Wheels Truck Sales, Inc. C, Midland S Westgate Jr. and Midland S Westgate III, DBA Westgate Auto. D, Daniel Kripsum, DBA Hometown Automotive. E, Millis Industries, Inc., DBA Pick and Pull. F, Joseph F Costa III, DBA J&amp;T Auto Salvage. And G, DB Fabrication, Inc., DBA Bugsy Stevens, Bug Stevens, Free Town Auto. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
And obviously, they, I should have mentioned this in the first one, but they all got their paperwork in?
Correct.
Everything's, all right, with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the listed Class III motor vehicle license renewals for 2024.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we have the motor vehicle graveyard license. So this is for Millis Industries, DBA Pick and Pull. Any discussion on that?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve 2024 renewal for motor vehicle graveyard license for Millis Industries, DBA Pick and Pull Motor Vehicle Graveyard.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And final one of these, now we have a renewal for auctioneer license for Joseph F Costa III, DBA J&amp;T Auto Sales. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2024 renewal for auctioneer's license for Joseph F Costa III, DBA J&amp;T Auto Salvage.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda item nine, this is whether or not to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Spinnaker Technology for IT services, IT support services and consulting services? I guess?
Yeah, it's for consulting services on an as needed basis for the fire and police departments.
Aye.
Same contract that was signed in 2011. It's been in place. This is just newer version.
All right. Any discussion on that?
No. I'm glad it's done. Thank you, Debbie.
Yes.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Spinnaker Technologies for IT support and consulting services.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda item 10, this is discussion of vote on using $150,000 of additional ARPA funds for engineering and any incidental costs related to sewer line engineering.
Can I ask that we table that one? Because there's some misunderstanding. I thought we were gonna need more funds and talking with Helen Gordon at Environmental Partners, and she said, no, she thinks we're good with where we're at. So I'm gonna put that one on hold right now.
Perfect. Yeah. That doesn't have to worry about it.
Sorry about that. I know.
Take it.
We're preparing these. I was trying to get a quote from her for the additional amounts. And we're meeting, I believe we're meeting tomorrow, so I'll have more information. So if it needs to come back on, I'll put it back on. Sorry about that.
No problem. All right, agenda item 11, this is discussion of vote on using $100,000 of additional ARPA funds for the municipal fiber project. Any discussion on this?
No.
What's, can you remind me what the timeline is on that?
So the grant, the grant needs to be used for December of '24. So this is, I'm in the process of kind of pulling this together at this point, get it moving. I think they, they think they're gonna take four months to actually install fiber.
That's not too bad.
But it's federal money, so there's a procurement piece that we would otherwise not have to go through. So I'm just gonna start working on that now.
Okay.
So, but that's a $335,000 grant that we have already. And this money will finish the connecting all of the town buildings to each other. And it eliminates all of our costs for Comcast, or the majority, I shouldn't say all of them, but the majority of our costs for Comcast, which I believe we have 19 contracts with Comcast to the tune of $2,600 a month. So it, over time, it will eventually pay for itself. Plus, we'll have.
Way better internet. Well, that's a big part, right? It's just in the time, like, I think people will generally be more efficient if they're, if they know, like, right now, it takes a long time for certain files to get uploaded. And, you know, that's time is money there, right?
And there's a, I mean, there's a lot to do with, too, the, you know, the dispatch center connecting to the fire department. It's, it's a little bit, it can be slow. We've had to do a lot of work. We've already had to upgrade to fiber on one end, just to get those files over there in a timely manner. So this is just gonna complete this whole project. Plus, we're tied to the school and the two towers that we're working on for the radio communication system, right? So that's a backup to the, the existing communications. So we'll have one more redundant way in case power goes out or something. We'll still have this fiber piece.
That's interesting.
And we'll be hooked into the school, who, they also want us to be hooked into them, you know what I mean? So they've done some legwork. This will sort of finish that little leg. We'll be over the line in Lakeville, and we're going a little bit over in Berkeley.
Perfect. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve using $100,000 of additional ARPA funds for municipal fiber project.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now, agenda item 12, is discussion of vote whether to continue planning the fire station renovation addition project?
This is just to confirm, you know, that the budget has come in potentially $1.2 million above the funds that have already been set aside. We all think it's the best approach to put that out to bid and see what we actually get for a price before we go to town meeting and ask for the additional funds. But I just wanna confirm that we're all on the same page, or that the selectmen want me to move forward with the project with the additional budget. Otherwise, they have to cut the plan, you know, change the plans. And I honestly, I think I've said this in the past, I don't see an easy cut, because they, they're only getting three of their 10 needs met. And to cut a bay out would be, it's a two-story bay. So if I cut part of the bay out, I'm cutting part of the bunk rooms out, you know? So, which is, we really need the bunk rooms, and we need the bay. And the third is the training room. And that's gonna be, the existing building's gonna be turned into the training room. So I don't see a way of cutting $1.2 million out of this project without severely, you know, without meeting the needs of what they need at this point.
Yeah.
And I think you guys probably already know what I'm gonna say it anyway, is that, you know, this number that we originally came up with was based off of what we were given by the original architect, right? And now these, these new guys came in and did a very detailed and thorough job, right, Debbie? And they gave us some new numbers that are much more accurate. And obviously, a substantial amount more money, but to Debbie's point, they're not, there's nothing in there that makes you say, oh, they can take this away, or whatever, and knock the cost down substantially. It's just, I don't see it. None of us see it that are involved.
And I'll caveat that with, the extra funding should be able to come out of free cash. So there's no increase in tax. You know, we're not, we're not gonna push this through the, it's out of the existing free cash.
Yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't make sense. Three out of 10, and then you'd lose everything without, without, just the whole purpose is getting the training room, the bunk beds, and everything else. So there's really no way to trim the fat.
We'll have to do it sooner or later, right? I mean, it's gonna cost us more money in the future, unfortunately.
Yes, it is.
That's exactly.
The plan is exciting. I mean, it really is exciting.
It is. And one of the things that we talked a lot about was, is how do we, and Debbie started with this, how do we bring it to the town with the most accurate number? So we don't have to go back again and ask for additional funding again. So the best way to go about it is, is how she started it. So that's why we're at where we're at right now. And then, you know, everyone's on the same page. It's been a great thing as far as that goes, so. For yeah.
All right, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to vote to continue planning the fire station renovation addition project.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on, agenda item 13, this is for whether to award the contract for, or who did, award the contract for the concrete fueling map project on, at the highway yard? And do we only have, I mean, the low bid was with?
There were three bids.
Yeah, but was the low one with petroleum management?
Yes.
Trying to find the bids here. Yeah, so petroleum management came in at $31,000, Green Site Services was at 44, and SRS Petroleum Service at 56, so. Gonna go with Petroleum Management Services. Is everyone's okay with that? So with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the contract for the concrete fueling map project to Petroleum Management Services.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the next one is just, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between town of Free Town and Petroleum Management Services, Inc. for the concrete fueling map at the highway yard.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda item 15, this is whether or not to close the transfer station to the public the day after Thanksgiving? And this is what we usually do, right?
I think we did this last year. They wanna use their personal time, but we just need to give everybody enough notice that they're gonna be closed on that Friday.
I would say that if we, as long as we don't have anything else too pressing that needs to be on the boards, maybe we can post it onto some of the town boards, you know, that we have around town, so.
Yeah. But any other discussion on, like, just?
No, no, because obviously, it's, I, you know, I wanted you right by the employees, but I also know that there will be a lot of people who have the day off after. So I don't want to get the people yelling and screaming that they filled their cars up with leaves and branches and stuff, and then they got there and it was closed, so. So I just wanna be as proactive as we possibly can.
Free Town Flash, too, right? Or like Free Town Flash Communication all around. Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, to close the transfer station to the public the day after Thanksgiving.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda item 16, we have a change order from K.R. Rizendes from Memorial Drive Pedestrian Access Improvements.
Yeah, it went down. I'll, I'll take it.
It did.
Little cost savings there.
This is a bizarre day, the second, second time. Okay.
Yeah, it was like $2,700 of that just came out. I think he didn't spend the money on maybe police details that was in the original contract.
Okay, that makes sense.
So he just needs an amended, I need him to have an amended contract so I can pay him.
Yep, that makes sense. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order, sorry, to approve Change Order 1 from K.R. Rizendes for the Memorial Drive Pedestrian Access Improvements.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on, this is for the annual town election, to have it Monday, April 1st, 2024, from 12:00 to 8:00 PM at the Free Town Elementary School Gymnasium. That date work for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it might even be by law.
I think so, too. It's the first month, whatever, yeah, first Monday in April or something.
April Fools' Day.
Oh, jeez. That's gonna cause an issue. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to call for the annual town election on Monday, April 1st, 2024, from 12:00 to 8:00 PM at the Free Town Elementary School Gym.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Although my election was not. It was a weird one.
Definitely not tomorrow. I know they closed the schools tomorrow. But no school tomorrow.
Yeah, it was delayed.
No elections tomorrow, and no school.
Yeah. All right, so next is agenda item 18, this is discussion of vote whether to use Excel Recyclings annual donation to, for use the fire department trailer?
So per the settlement agreements, Excel is supposed to give the selectmen a $25,000 a year donation to use at their discretion.
Yep.
He was having conversations with Harry, who, from the fire department, who is looking for a trailer, a covered trailer, for $13,186. And Mr. Costa would like to fund that and gave us a check in that amount, but it's made out to the town of Free Town.
Okay.
To fund, and, and I have the quote here, for the covered trailer. So it's sort of a two-process. You can, you vote to accept the donation, which, you know, is part of the settlement agreement anyway. It's a portion, it's not the whole amount that he's.
Yeah.
Agreed to. And then you can vote to use it on the trailer or not use it on the trailer. I think that's up to the board, as the settlement agreement, right, is written, in my opinion.
Listen. First responders, so let's give it to them. But as long as we get the difference, right?
Right. Well, is, well, looking at the agreement, it says $25,000. It doesn't say that we're gonna get $5,000, $6,000. I say keep it clean and get to $25,000, and then we decide what to do with the $25,000. If he wants to donate something, he could donate the, the mutual agreeable professional design sign and another reasonable signage for Cape Nell Industrial Park. Splitting here is, then he's gonna go, because I say we just keep it clean, because in this agreement, it doesn't say anything about dividing up the agreement. It doesn't say anything about taking a portion of the agreement. It says $25,000 on that date. And that's, to keep it clean, I say we accept the $25,000 and then take it from there. If the police or fire needs something, they can come to us like they usually do, and then use those funds or use other funds and not accept it. Like, I, we didn't accept the last donation, well, he was trying to donate something last time for the schools. This is just muddies the water a little bit. I wanna keep it clean. This needs to be $25,000. Thank you for the donation, but it's 25K. That's what it says on the agreement. If not, we have to go back to court and ask them, or go to the attorneys, and that's, that's okay. Because.
Yeah.
I mean, he, he's already given us a check here for $13,000.
Always return it.
So.
But, so is he saying, I guess, so the only confusion I have is, he's saying the $13,000 instead of the $25,000? Or is?
He's not saying that, in my opinion. I think he's just saying that this is part, this is part of what he wants to, you know, that he was talking to Harry, Harry needs this trailer, and I don't, I didn't get. Yeah. Harry did confirm this with me, but I don't, I didn't get details of what he, you know, Harry says he needs something, he needs it, and that. I think, you know, Marty wants to donate the money so Harry can get the trailer. So no, I don't believe that's the whole amount. There's no way that says that. So he will have to give us the residual. Or he won't be in compliance when it comes before his, for his renewal.
That makes sense.
And that's why it's simpler just to take the $25,000 and now, if Harry needs it, we know it's the cost of it, and we can take it from there.
You know, I see what you're saying, because the only issue I have is, like, we have the check, we can talk to him about the next, the next payment, right? This is, happens every year. But if we have the check here, and we can just, just to move this along quicker, so Harry can get that trailer, and we can just be done with this? Like, and then we can just give him feedback, hey, next time, you know, we'll just, we want a $25,000 check. And that's how this has to work going forward? As, I don't disagree with you, I just, I just think that just gonna cause more of a.
Right, my concern is, we're violating the court order, which is a settlement. It doesn't say anything in there, I've read this thing 10 times over, that says we could take partial payment. It says a $25,000 check. It doesn't say anything deviation otherwise to say we can accept donations or a check for half, or, or proposing. It says we will accept $25,000 on this date. Doesn't say anything else about breaking it down. So if we're gonna violate this court order, what else can this court, what else can we change on this? That'd be my.
Yeah, I guess I disagree. I wanna say it's violating, I think, I, I agree with you, it's, it's a little, like, and to be honest, he probably wants to, you know, like, he's doing, he thinks he's doing parry solid, right? And this is what you need, this is what it's for. Does not get him, does not mean that they can't, they don't still have to, you know, give the rest of that money. I, I.
Yeah, I just look at that, look at the letter he sent in, and then the letter we got from, from the testing we're doing at Excel, taking those two letters together, I just think it's clean and simple. It's $25,000, free and clear. There's no dividing funds. It, it just, I still wanna, it's, it's getting murky as far as the donation portion. And then in there, looking at the legal, looking at it, doesn't say we can take, accept half. It says we will accept $25,000. So is this gonna happen every single year? That's the precedent we're setting. And I just wanna be clean with them, so there's no back and forth. Listen, I, I love the fact that we're getting money for a trailer, that's fantastic. But we'll take the $25,000 and then subtract that money to buy a trailer. And this way, we're making a decision, not him sending us a letter and a check saying, hey, this is what we're gonna do. It's not his decision. I appreciate him coming out, doing that, but this is just, we can use that money for other things, like more testing, that's, which I'd rather do than get a trailer. But I understand that Harry needs a trailer, but this isn't the way to go about it. I just don't feel comfortable with it. And if, if we do go forward, I need something legally saying that we're authorized to do this in writing by an attorney, court-appointed somebody, because right now, this looks, this feels wrong.
I'm okay with it, as long as we, A, get the other amount, and then I guess just a quick confirmation from our attorneys that say, like, well, that we're not gonna violate the, the court order.
No, the letter says, like, I will be sending a check and that amount as a first portion of our annual donation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, like.
Right, the letter says that, but the letter is just a letter. The court, the court settlement says you will pay $25,000.
Your teeth is that, when you, when he comes in to renew his license in April, I believe, you can say, look, you, you're not even in compliance with this agreement, if he doesn't pay the residual. So I don't think that he's not going, but, hey, I mean, if he doesn't, he doesn't. But that will be certainly one more grounds to deny him a permit.
Like, if you, you know, I think, the way I read this, like, if he wanted to, he could write his, you know, $25,000, you know, or $25,000 checks, if he want, like, it's, the way he pays us, I think that's at their discretion, as long as they pay us $25,000, right? Like, I, I see what you're saying, it makes it a little, you know?
Right, it says, Excel will make a small gift of $25,000 to the town by this, by, in accepting it. It doesn't say anything about, hey, we're gonna buy this for a trailer.
I, I totally agree with you.
It's giving us the money to the town.
And I think it's two separate, it's two separate votes, right? Like, one, and that's what Debbie was saying, too, is, it's, like, the first vote is, like, accepting the donation. Now that's our discretion, what we do with it, right? And, and yes, I think, you know, he reached out.
$25,000 donation.
Yeah, I totally agree. He reached out, so, like, but we'd have to do this anyways. If we got a $25,000 donation, and then, and then, you know, we'd have to then allocate that out to whatever we see as reasonable. I mean, I think of, of like, it is a reasonable thing that I think the chief wants here.
Yeah, no, no, his.
If it was unreasonable, then I would, like.
Sure, no, his request is fine, and, and like, like anything else, if any chief, whether it's Chief Rose or Chief Ashley, come to us and say, hey, we need ABC, we'll do the same thing like we did at town meeting, we'll put it out there, and we'll get it for them if it's a reasonable request. And it does seem reasonable.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, of, the way this is coming through, I don't feel comfortable just saying, yes, we'll take this donation, then pay us again. It says, clear as day, section three, pay, on that page, that says, we will accept $25,000. It doesn't say we'll set a sub, multiple sums of, up equal to $25,000. It says $25,000. And listen, I'm not trying to be a hard ass, I'm really not, and I, we want the trailer, we want the money. At the same time, we need to make sure we follow this to the, to the letter. And that's my concern. There's this, so there's no gray area. We followed it, and, you know, there's, there's a sign involved in that as well. I, either, we need to get it, either somebody other than us saying, hey, this is allowed, right? Court order, because this is through a magistrate, this, we, we're, the board signed off on it, but the language on there says the full $25,000. There's no deviation on that.
But it, does it say one-time payment? I don't know.
It's just, Excel will make an annual gift of $25,000 this town.
Does it call it one time, and I guess, but.
Like, they could do quarterly payments if they wanted to, right?
So I don't know, and I guess, I mean, I guess.
That's why I wanted to clarify.[1528.88]
So I don't know. And I guess, I mean, I guess we can ask the simple question to Joe, whoever, right? Or to Mark, I guess, would be the person. And just say, hey, this won't violate this in your, you're saying, no.
I don't say it will. And like I said.
You're in turn.
I'm looking at this quote for the, the trailer. Because it's in excess of $10,000, I'm gonna have to do some procurement work. So you guys could always accept the donation while I work on getting procurement for the trailer, because I can't just purchase anything. Um, I, and I guess, you know, and that's, and that's on some level on my fault, because Excel could have purchased it directly and donated the trailer. But I told him that the way it should happen is the check comes to the town, Freetown, because you, you, then you have control over it.
It stinks for you for the work, but I think at the same time.
Well, I think that was the correct way to do it. So you could vote to accept the thing and not vote to purchase the trailer if you choose not to. Um, but, you know.
I, I just think we need a legal counsel to let us know how this, that this is.
Oh, that's Debbie, truthfully.
But she's not our legal, I, I, she's got experience there, but she's not the town's legal counsel. So uh, we, we entered into agreement legally to make, for those exact words. By taking a portion of it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't come off as, as.
I don't think that retaking a portion of it waves your right to the rest of it. Like I said, you will certainly have teeth in that. The only teeth you have with that is, of course, you could do contempt of, you know, the settlement agreement. But the real teeth is that his license hearing.
Yeah.
That's your real teeth, right? Because nobody cares about the 25 grand at the end of the day, really.
Just that it's part of the.
It's that, it's part of the agreement. And if he violates it, then you have uh, grounds to say, hey, we're not issuing your, your permit.
Thing with the whole thing is that he accepted as a donation, but it's not a donation. He has to pay that 25,000. He's just looking for a good PR thing by giving you that check, telling you, he went to the fire department for it, right? He went to the fire department before he wanted to buy them washers and dryers. Remember? And then the town had to turn him down on that one. It's like, he's just looking for a good way in. That's his whole thing.
Well, that's, yeah, that, most, I mean, I think companies do that all the time, though. I got every company very worked for.
And I don't know what his intent is. And I, and I will, I, and I won't speak. All I'm looking at is.
Wants to spend the money to put a security camera up over there so that we can see when the explosions happen. Because you got the, the building inspector goes there 20 minutes later and says he sees no results of the explosion. Well, the explosion doesn't last for 20 minutes. And it's not like a missile landed there. The, the propane tanks go through that shredder thing and they explode. They rock everybody's house over there. But nothing can be caught on camera. All the residents have a wall between us, so we can't catch it. Up on Ridge Hill Road there, there used to be a camera up on a telephone pole. You could put it back there in the thing, and it shows right to the shredder. Doesn't show his people walking around or anything. There's no reason why we shouldn't have a camera there. That's a, you guys have a marijuana facility right there. So it should be a security thing anyhow. You got the train, the train thing going up there. So why wouldn't the town put a security camera up there? So if it looks at Excel.
Someone to consider, sure.
Um, could you use that $25,000 to do it?
Throw a check.
So, yeah, okay. So if you, I'm okay with accepting this, this, I, I understand, I understand your, where you stand across. That makes sense to me. Um, I think that just, if I can get this moving faster, especially now with 23 procurement and everything else to, to actually do that. I'm okay with it. I think that we should communicate, Deb. If, you know, it'd be cleaner going forward if we just get one check.
Yep.
Um, and if you wanted to run it by Joe going forward too, I mean, you know, we could always change his vote later on if you had to. Um, but I just wanna get money faster and get it into use.
Oh, absolutely. 100%. I just, again, my, my bone that's in the back, like my, you know, my legality of it is, are we 100% covered on this? And I don't, I, I, I just don't know. I, I'd rather be, I'd rather be sure 100% than being, than we need to get into 25 grand. It's just, you know, it's, you guys took a lot, like, I, I wasn't here for this settlement, but you guys took a lot, a long time to, to get to this agreement. Right? And, you know, I'm just reading black and white. I'm not looking for any gray area. I'm not trying to create any havoc or anything. Looking at that and it states, it's, to me, it states a one-time check of $25,000 on this date. And that's what it says. And a sign. I haven't seen a sign either. So.
There's an issue with the sign. Yeah, we don't have any property to put it on.
Yeah. No, no, I.
The issue with the sign. He would do the sign, but we don't have any town property up there. And he doesn't own the property on the side of the road. It's actually owned by the state.
Hmm. Sounds like a good idea to re, re, renegotiate.
That's been the issue, because he will do it, I think, if, if we could get the state to agree.
Does he own that, does he own that right away that, that goes up to his property in the back? Is that a town road or something?
I don't believe he does.
The driveway?
I think it's not town-owned, but I think it's owned by, um, it might be Mr. Nasser.
So I was wondering, how do they park all those trailers on that road?
And then maybe it's a private agreement. I don't know.
All right. So with that, I'm intending to motion to approve or to accept the, um, $13,186.45 um, as a part of the annual donation, uh, from Excel Recycling for the agreement. Um, and to use that for the fire department trailer.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on, agenda item 19. Uh, this is whether to approve the MOA between Town of Freetown and Freetown Police Association, uh, and Tom Long. Spoke with this executive session today. Um, so, um, any discussion on this?
No.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the MOA between the Town of Freetown and Police Association. Sorry, Freetown Police Association and Tom Long. Um, obviously, this is regarding the, uh, the canine. And we've come to a, um, slight tweak of some language that all parties have agreed to.
My motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. And then this is, uh, the addendum to that, to the agreement. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the addendum to the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Thomas Long.
My motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then item 21. Uh, this is discussion about whether to approve two contracts between the Town of Freetown and, um, Stark. Stark Architects for Architectural Services.
This is for the, um, I spoke to the board about the, doing the engineering for the ADA projects that we applied to for the grants. One being the bathrooms at the town hall, the second being the Lulu lift at the COA. Um, so these are the contracts to get that engineering going, so that they'll be ready to go out to bid in, say, January. I think the grant, the grants come through in December, but there's only like six months to implement them. So we have to move pretty quickly. Um.
Okay.
So in regardless, I think I said that we've already funded the project of trying to get a handicap bathroom in the town hall. So there is some town funds. And if the, if we don't get the grant for the Lulu lift, my thought is maybe we go to town meeting and try to ask for some of the money that's allocated for the, um, COA addition that if, if they, if they feel strongly enough about putting that in. But this is the necessary process to get that started.
All right. Sounds great. Any discussion, questions?
This is great.
All right. Awesome. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the two contracts between the Town of Freetown and Stark Architects for Architectural Services.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'll kick it over to selecting votes.
Thank you, sir. All right. No, item agenda 22. Discussion and vote whether to approve GLC 4111F, 111F, I should say, injured on duty status effective 10/23/2023. This is for an officer that was, um, called to a trespassing call and was injured on the line of duty. Um, and this is, uh, pretty straightforward. Any, any questions? Uh, concerns?
No.
All right. I entertain the motion to approve the GLC 4111F injured on duty status effective 10/23/2023 for the officer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along. Item agenda 23. Acknowledgement. The retirement of Alberta St. Louis as senior clerk, Board of Health, effective 12/16/2023. Alberta, thank you for your service, um, and hope you retire and, uh, hope you do some great things as you move forward. All right. Item agenda 24. Discussion and vote whether to start Logan St. Louis at, at step two, based on prior experience as a signal operator. So as you guys remember, we had an officer here, we just hired from another town. We increased their step based on experience. So Logan, um, was a dispatcher prior, then came back on as, as an officer and then took on some additional roles. So in keeping in step of what we've been doing, um, paying for the services and the police and dispatches that we have, this is, this is right along that same path.
Makes sense to me.
It makes sense.
All right. I entertain the motion to approve the step two increase for Logan St. Louis, based on prior experience as a signal operator.
Make that motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Item agenda 25, A through F. So I'll read them all and we can vote on afterwards. All right. Discussion vote whether to appoint the following appointments. All right. A, Nicole DeMore, sorry, Nicole. A, Nicole DeMore Anville, as senior clerk, conservation plan, effective 11/7/2023 through 6/30/2024. B, Logan St. Louis as signal operator, part-time, effective 11/6/2023 through 6/30/2024. C, Brenda Mata, to council on aging, library community building committee, at large, member, effective 11/7/2023 through 6/30/2024. Cameron Marri, Marias, sorry, Cam, if that's couldn't correct. Stephanie Ma-.
Mares, Mares.
Mares, okay. Cameron Mares and Stephanie Mares to Freetown Cultural Council, effective 11/7/2023 through 11/7/2026. E, Jacqueline Gorrell. Sorry, Jacqueline. That's not incorrect. As senior clerk, council on aging, full-time, effective 11/16/2023 through 6/30/2024. F, Alicia Lynn Boyven, to council on aging, library community building committee, alternate. COA effective 11/7/2023, 6/30/2024. Any questions or concerns other than my misspelling or mis-saying of their last names? All right. I entertain the motion to appoint the individuals on sections in agenda item 25, A through F, as, as read.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is back to town administration.
No, I think the only thing I have on here is the radio communications project. Um, we have negotiated the leases. We had to do procurement for them, even though they're the only towers for the tower leases that are out there. So the paperwork's been filed. As of November 11th, I can sign those leases because procurement will be officially satisfied. So that will happen. We have ordered some of the equipment, the antennas actually, that need to go up first before the radio equipment. Those have been ordered. There's a 14-week lead time. Um, so those are in the process. I applied for Opera for the additional funding for the project. However, my Opera portal went down. It just got back up today. And they're asking for some more information. So I will submit that and hopefully very soon we'll have, uh, an answer on the funding. So it's moving. Everybody's meeting every couple of weeks or every month, and we're keeping the process moving. But given the lead time on the equipment right now, we're probably talking about spring before all the equipment's up on the towers.
No, when you say all the equipment, is that, that's all, that, blah, blah, blah. Does that also include any, um, like Verizon or AT&amp;T signal towers up there to improve some of the communication?
This is the radio communication equipment that's going on the tower in Berkeley in, in East Freetown to make our radios, the police.
Oh, no, no. I understand that part. I was just, I know we also discussed potentially leasing out some of those, that space to, uh, third parties such as Verizon or AT&amp;T.
No, that, that would be here. I think you're thinking, this is, these are, um, towers that we don't own.
Okay.
That we're leasing the space off of a section of the towers in order to make this tower work better to here.
That has to go, so to, to lease out our tower has to go out to bid. Luanne has started the paperwork for that. Um, but it's very, um, heavily driven by architectural stuff. So I just got the plans for this tower that I can put in that RFP. There's a lot of information we need to put in there. The reality is, there's only three big users that might lease that.
Right.
Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T. And I thought, maybe I should just reach out to them and see if they're interested before we go through all of the work of the RFP. Cause it's extensive. Um, it's a lot of work to pull together the documents. So when I have time, I will reach out to them and see. That would be a, a nice revenue source for us.
I would also say Comcast as well, because I know Comcast does not have wireless.
I wonder if they're evacuating on a different company's network.
Hmm. Maybe.
I don't know.
Well, they all use the same one, right? Like the same tower and it's just leasing from each other.
Fight over.
I lived up here for like most of my, most of my life and we had a terrible server service.
Especially Comcast.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sliver drool. I mean, we know there's really a lot of dead spots. So I just haven't gotten to it yet, but it's actually in the works. Like, send the way and start of the paperwork. It looks pretty good. But now I've gotta put in all these charts from the existing tower and trying to put that, pull that together is, it's not just simple, you know what I mean? There's a little bit of work involved.
Nothing ever is, is it?
Right. And I think it's a good idea doing it, because a lot of families are, are switching from the traditional cable as far as going to wireless, because it's somewhat, you know, better priced, right?
Yeah.
But the, but the reception is spotty at times, right? So with these towers and, and with that equipment of T-Mobile, Verizon, Comcast, whoever it is, would probably boost that, that and then get more value for your dollar. So. Especially as kids need internet for everything these days.
Yep.
That's it. That's all I have.
Do you think we can sign now, Luann? So we have a.
Don't have to sign anything except for the Verizon.
Okay, yeah. We have public hearing in about 12 minutes. So we'll just sign now.
Can't wait to rise here.
Oh, gosh. So I, I haven't been able to find any, um, any interface.
I go to Depot, Camp World.
Really?
Yeah.
So.
Go to Walmart.
No, you, you check Walmart. In fact, I didn't even check Amazon. They have.
I had, I got mine at Camp World, but I got it a few weeks back, probably.
How many gallons you put in there?
One.
Just one gallon?
Yeah. I blow the lines out.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I, I do too.
But I use the lines out. And then I put, I mean, truthfully, you don't even have to put that. I probably, so the, I have two sinks, the tub, yeah, two sinks, the, three sinks actually, because they have the outside, the tub, yeah. So I put it down like the five drains that I have. And then I just dump the rest in the toilet, because then whatever's left.
Little old thing. Yeah. Yeah. You should put a few gallons in and just bleed it out. You have the PEX or do you have the, uh?
Yeah, it's PEX.
So that should be.
Do you drink a drill?
Yeah. That's what we're talking about.
Uh, making it winterized.
Everybody at the town brings them to the, wait, should we even plant and dump them?
Well, it's funny, when I do, when I do do it, I usually take it with me to the next place and then dump it down the, um, whatever camper I'm in. You know, don't, don't take it out, drive to wherever you go. And usually it's somewhere with a full system. And then just dump it out there. And I always ask them to make sure, those listening, I always ask first.
Thank you.
They always say yes.
All right. Harpa.
Yeah, let's track out, check out that Jellystone place.
Mm-hmm.
On cover.
Mm-hmm.
Looks, looks nice.
I've actually heard a couple of good things about it, that they did a good job with it. Cause that was just like a little hole in the wall type place before. And I heard they did some good renovations and the water, like, uh.
They do adult water slides.
Yep. I, I think they're very.
The next time we meet is week of Thanksgiving. Isn't that crazy?
My favorite holiday. So we wear stretchy pants and eat as much as you want.
I love Thanksgiving.
It's the only time of year I shave my beard, so I don't get anything on it.
And there's no presents, so no pressure.
Right. Oh, there's always presents. There's always presents in my house.
So you get something. That's, that's best. Just wanting for the state call election?
We're freezing.
I know. All of a sudden, it's cold in here. These are all officers. So.
We're gonna sign tonight.
All right. It seems like they're moving along.
There's only one, I only have, yeah, there you go.
It's just supporting documentation.
Mares, yeah.
Mike Mares is done?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, that would be Mike Mares' wife and daughter.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't seem like a little bit. Can you do it yet? I set up, uh, I set it up two days ago. Spent the last two weekends in Cape Cod or Nantucket this weekend. We finished our season off. Came in first place, which is great for soccer. Um, yeah, it was, it came down to the last game, puts us to the first place. We went to, uh, Nantucket, the Monomy. And, uh, suffered our first loss of the year in Nantucket. Fast, uh, great field, but it was all turf. So it just, the ball was moving fast and, uh, people cut off guard a little bit. But then, uh, last game, we scored enough points and won the game in first place.
Awesome.
We'll take it very easily.
Take it.
The kids must be thrilled.
Oh, they're doing, yeah, they're thrilled. Wasn't me. Yeah, I saw the Bourne Bridge more times this weekend than I have in the past year. Like five, six times. It's like, man.
I drive over that thing more than I kid or me.
I was in Brewster on Saturday, or Dennis and Brewster. And then I like drove home, you know, pretty early on Sunday. And I was like, so nice, like, not being in traffic. Cause I left the house at six in the morning. Like, just like driving through the Cape, no traffic. It's a very nice place, just.
Far away.
And you, well, usually I just, whenever I'm down there, there's always like debilitating traffic. It's like.
Yeah. Yeah. The first week, we hit some traffic. Then they, I guess they finished the lanes.
I missed one?
And then the last, this, this past week, it wasn't too bad at all. We moved pretty well. Then we went down to Monomy. You guys know where that is?
Yeah.
I had a GPS it.
I don't know.
Beautiful school. I was, I was impressed. Makes you wonder, that, that curb is awful tall when you drive.
All those curves?
Uh, I, I hate driving with, with a camper over, over that. So if you hit the, if you hit those curves with your camper, oh, oh, forget it.
You, I've never actually.
I don't need to mess, miss, lose those. I think, oh no. Yeah. I think maybe all of them. Did we all miss them or I?
Oh, it's okay. Let's put together with something.
Okay, all right.
I go down the middle, um, over the bridge with my camper.
Same here. I, I stay in the middle lane. I don't care who's beeping at me. I'm, I am not going nowhere near those sidewalks.
You can all wait.
Yep. Same here.
You can all wait. And when I get on the other side.
I drive over that, those bridge con, bridges constantly. And I drive and I'm like, you see the track, the trails and something like this close and they're consistent the whole way down.
I'm right down the middle. I, I have my blinkers on. I'm, I'm, I'm telling people, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm staying safe today. Especially if there's a high wind. Yeah, we went down to Coastal Acres down in Province Town. A little tight for, but beautiful. About a half mile downtown is, kids loved it.
It's tough, though. They're like, they're like, actually, I think I slept, and I actually felt refreshed today, the first time this time.
Wow, with a newborn baby, that's something.
I know. Well, I think I just, I was so tired. I just slept through the crying. My wife woke up.
You guys getting enough sleep?
I don't, I don't even know anymore.
It's a loaded question. I, we've, we've all been there. It's, uh, you're, you're becking call 24/7.
Yep.
It never ends.
Oh, I know. My wife keeps telling me, you know, you still have to feed the kids now, right? I'm like, yeah.
Oh, there's more.
Standby.
We've got plenty when I came back.
Why do you, uh, ask to do this?
I'm, I'm sure Luann would have suggested this, I think, to, I just Peter to the punch.
There's so many. It's right.
Yeah, that's a lot. My hands are getting sore.
Yeah. It's like a couple tunnels starting to kick in.
I think I'll do the licenses as they come in, so I don't have to hit with all of them at the same night. We'll be here for an hour or so.
We appreciate that.
All right. Then we have a couple more minutes here.
Is everybody up on their email? Is everybody up on their email and everything after our changeover?
Yep, changed my passwords today.
Fifty percent. The phone's good, tablet, not so much, but I'll work on that. It's me, I haven't had the time to dive in, delete things, upload it, and then I forgot my Apple ID password.
Oh, that's the worst.
It is, it really is.
It's everyone's life story, because we said before, right, you have so many different devices, so many different things, different passwords.
I've like, like, lost my phone on vacation and then didn't know the Apple ID, and you're really in trouble. You can't even buy a new phone.
Well, I did the, the rookie husband mistake of, uh, not, one, I got my wife a new phone, a couple of years ago, and that was a little mistake, she, she needed a new phone, but we went camping, and I decided to set everything up while camping, right? So I bring a hotspot with us and everything else, so I set up the password. She goes to download all her stuff, the password that I set doesn't work.
Ah, jeez.
So for three, four years now, I've been paying a dollar ninety-nine for two hundred gigs of storage, and I try that password probably thirty times a month, just to see if I can get to it.
Yeah.
To unlock all the baby photos for years, and so, and every so often, she'll remind herself, and she goes, man, that time you did this to me. So, yes, honey, I do. It's costing me two ninety-nine a month.
More than that's the photos, right?
Yeah, well worth it, honey, in case you're listening.
Hi, Jessica.
How are you? Oh, hey.
Hello?
I have to start this, I have to wait till seven, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we have two more minutes, and then we'll kick off the, uh, public hearing.
Just in case you want to talk. Green means a thought. Just in case you want to.
That's for karaoke night. Welcome.
Good, prepared.
All right, seven o'clock on my computer. All right, so, um, I'm going to read the public notice here, and then we'll open the public hearing. So Town Free Town Public Notice, uh, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, NSTAR Electric Company, DVA EverSource Energy, request permission to locate underground cables, conduits, and manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures in, under, along, and across the following public way or ways, King Philip Way, Free Town, to install one hundred and ninety-two feet of conduit cable along town road, uh, and one new handhole to be labeled, uh, one zero 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 nine, uh, slash four thirty dash D. Uh, wherefore it prays that, after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it's, uh, it be granted a location for and permission to install and maintain underground cables, conduits, and manholes, together with such sustaining and protective fixtures as it may find necessary. Um, said undergrounds, cables, conduits, and manholes to be installed in accordance with the plan files, uh, here with marked Plan Number one four three four five three seven four, dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Hearing to consider the above will be held on November sixth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM, at the police station community room, um, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Free Town, Mass. Persons interested in, uh, commenting may appear at this public hearing. If unable to attend, the public hearing comments may be submitted in writing later. Then they close the business on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Let's see, Boris Leckman, Free Town, uh, sorry, Free Town Boris Leckman, Sam Buzz. So now, now open the public hearing. Uh, looks like we have a representative from, uh, NSTAR.
EverSource.
EverSource. DVA EverSource, you're right, I missed, only read the first part.
No.
We have some plans.
Yeah, Luanne just handed me these paper plans if you want to see.
So your first question, the work has not taken place yet, right?
And I'm gonna first apologize, I had no idea that that happened. Some, I don't know if, sometimes our system completes the rights, uh, stuff, and, or if they sometimes just go out and do it. So I apologize.
No, no, it's, it's fine, just had to nip a little.
Tell them next time, take it out, redo it, no, just kidding. Teach them a lesson, kidding.
Yeah.
Uh, let me introduce myself, Jessica Elder, EverSource, um, so, it, good evening, members of the Select Board, as I say. Um, so again, I'm just going to reiterate what you said, we're planning to, uh, with petitioning to install approximately one hundred and ninety-two feet of conduit. Um, this is happening on King Philip Way, we're, uh, installing underground service for thirty-three, King Philip Way. So we're going to be going on the edge, uh, installing a handhole right on the property line, and going right along the edge of the, uh, the road there, onto an existing handhole. Um, I'm sorry, existing pad mount transformer. Um, it is for the customer at thirty-three, King Philip Way, and, uh, the work should take approximately one to two business days, uh, at the most. Um, we will, if a detail is necessary, if you think a detail is necessary, we'll definitely request one. And, you know, the road is going to be trenched, not, uh, directional drilling, which we do some of the time. Um, but I know, I did notice on the sketch that it did say it was going to be trenched and not, not directional drilling, but we will put the road back in the condition that it was in, or better.
Appreciate that.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and you've already answered all the questions I had, so I don't think a detail's going to be needed, that's all.
Yeah, that's not a busy area.
I, I did get a couple of questions from some residents that live nearby, if you could, if you could, uh, if I could just ask them and then answer them, so that we have it on record. So some of you, some of the neighbors, uh, they understand this is going to happen, and they, they support it for the most part, right? They are concerned about interruption of power, right? So you said one or two days, um, let's, let's say, to connect it, how long will it take to connect it? Once, you know, you connect the live feed to the dead-end feed, um, what, what's the timeframe for the interruption of power?
This shouldn't, I mean, this pad, there's a pad mount that's existing, so we're putting in a handhole going in, so it should not interrupt.
Anything?
No.
Okay.
No.
Perfect, I'll, I'll report that back to them. The second question was, some of the neighbors also are, um, elderly and, and some, um, considered disabled, they have electrical equipment that are, that run on generator power. So the question was, if the power is disconnected, their, their power, the generator kicks on, they're concerned about backfeed, and I, I told them I'd ask the question, so here I am, ask the question.
Right.
Any concerns with backfeed to a generator or to the live?
I, I don't see a reason that anybody's going to lose power.
Okay.
Yes, you know, they're not disrupting anything, they're not pulling, taking down a pole, putting down, they're just going underground, putting in that handhole, and then connecting to a pad mount, so they're not going to dis.
And in case there's interruption of power, will you notify the neighbors?
They have to notify if there's going to be a disruption, that's a different department, so they have to notify if there's going to be a disruption, disruption. They normally would send out letters, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
All right, any other questions or concerns? No? Okay, so with that, um, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the hearing, right, and then we'll vote. So with that.
Make the motion, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, I'll say, so yeah, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then, um, agenda item twenty-seven is, uh, whether or not to approve NSTAR Electric Company, DVA EverSource Energy, request for, uh, King Philip Ways, align public hearing notice above, and I will entertain a motion that we approve the request.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
One more signature to do, and then we'll be up to here.
Fantastic. Congrats on the new property.
I think you have the air conditioner on.
Host one, host one, sorry, right? Host one party after it's done.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Right, and hopefully they can start.
Thank you. It's good.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.